To call the December 3rd, 2013 City Council Meeting to Order, the Honorable Mayor Thomas Gerani presiding. Please stand for the invocation by Pastor Peter M. Homer and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we begin with thanks for you are indeed a giving God. We thank you for life, for health, for community in which we live, for a country where we enjoy great freedom, and also great responsibility. We pray that as we gather for this council meeting this evening, we might remember that we're entrusted with the welfare of all. Pray for our council persons, men and women, and our mayor, and all who serve in our city, and they might be wise, just, and patient as they work together. Remember the concerns and needs of all who dwell here. We ask for peace, justice, prosperity in this time and this place. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call. Mayor Gerani.
Here.
Councilwoman Barber, Abbotent Councilman Girl.
Here.
Councilman Hug.
Here.
Councilman McFarland.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Here.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Here.
Councilman Turk. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Is there a motion, the minutes of the special council meeting and pre-council meetings held on November 18th and the regular meeting held on November 19th stand approved as recorded?
It's all moved.
Second.
Krista.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Barber, I'm sorry, excuse me, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, council committee reports. Land use and legislative committee report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we met this afternoon, actually at 3:30 PM here in council chambers, Council McFarland and myself and staff, and we had a discussion that we were going to recommend two honorary street signs. One is a relocation, and one is a street sign that's been waiting for some time now. So we asked for that to be brought to the full council, possibly at the next meeting, and also a new street that has just been put in here in the city of Joliet to be named also by a community leader in that area. So that'll be brought to the council, hopefully at our next meeting, for approval. And that was pretty much it.
I don't know, Jim, did you have any? That's it?
This is a short meeting for change.
Thank you.
Public Service Committee report.
Now, the Public Service Committee comprised of councilmen McFarland and myself met yesterday afternoon prior to the pre-council meeting to review the contract exchange orders, pay estimates, and found them all to be in order, and they are on our agenda tonight and recommend their approval.
Thank you.
I still no other reports. We did receive a request to move up the proclamation on tonight's agenda. This proclamation is honoring St. Paul the Apostle Giants baseball team, 2013 IESA Class 1A state champions. Coach Mike Malone and Tom Tyrrell are here to accept the proclamation.
Stand up, coaches. Congratulations.
Well, you know, I tell you, it's always exciting when you can do proclamations like this, when you see some hometown team, the St. Paul's Giants, win a state title in baseball. And St. Paul's definitely has a history since they've been around of playing some good baseball. I think you guys have, what, two or three titles, three titles?
Three state championships.
Okay, three state championships in the last, how many years, Coach? Last eight years? That's a fantastic run. You know, I actually, I know a little bit about IESA baseball myself. In fact, in '03, '04, and '05, I coached the St. Ray's baseball team, and I gotta ask the question, guys, how'd you do against St. Ray's this year? I don't know. Was it good? You split. Okay, excellent. All right, good, good. But they had an excellent baseball team this year. I can tell you this, kids, when you go home tonight, thank your parents, because your parents, I'm sure, did a lot of shagging, a lot of shagging to practice, games, supporting you, making sure you get to and from practice and that sort of thing. So make sure that when you get home tonight, you give your parents a, you know, a thank you. And I'm sure you probably got a lot of parents out there through a lot of batting practice with all the coaches, but it's certainly a lot of fun, and it seems like you got some young guys, so you're gonna be good in the future, right, Coach?
Hope so.
Excellent, good. We got a proclamation here. Whereas the St. Paul the Apostle Giants school baseball team made its fifth appearance in the Illinois Elementary School Association State Baseball Tournament, October 5th and 6th, 2013. St. Paul the Apostle is the only Will County grade school to boast three IESA state baseball championships in the last decade, also winning in 2006 and 2007. And the St. Paul the Apostle Giants excelled under the dedicated leadership of coaches Mike Malone, Tom Tyrrell, and Brian Stroud, who volunteered countless hours conducting incredibly well-organized and executed practices with an unbelievable attention to detail to help their players reach their full potential as a championship baseball team. Are they talking about you, Brian, here? All right, good. That's what I thought. The St. Paul the Apostle Giants competed against 84 teams from across the state of Illinois, defeating their first four opponents by a combined score of 40 to 1. And the St. Paul the Apostle Giants defeated the Bartonville Oak Grove West Eagles 8 to 6 in the finals to capture the 2013 IESA Class 1A state championship. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Thomas Gerani, Mayor of the City of Joliet, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, I do here recognize the accomplishments of St. Paul the Apostle Giants baseball team. Let's give them round.
Kind of put me on the spot to say something here, but I will, I do want to recognize the boys, obviously, and the accomplishment of winning a state championship this year. So I'll just name them off real quick, and maybe you guys can stand up and be recognized. Dylan Hensley, Dolan Glasgow, Alex Vera, Aiden Terrill, Josh Bolick, Zach Offerman, Jack McGinnis, Owen Rozell, Dean Procaroni, Max Cullen, Matt Bebar, Jack Scordo, Ben Zawacki, Nick Trevino, Reed Olson, and Drew Popovich isn't here. So, oh, Drew's right there, Drew Popovich just popped in, so. And obviously, I just wanted to recognize, as John said, the efforts of all the parents and the support that they gave us this year. It was, you know, you never know what you have until you step on the field. It's a very short season in terms of grade school baseball. These guys had a lot of work to do, and I gotta commend them on the fact that they came together as a team, knowing when he was out there for themselves, they were all out there for one another, and we had one goal this year, and it was to win a state championship, and they set their minds to it, and it was an unbelievable feeling as Zach Offerman struck out the last guy to win the state championship. And I gotta tell you, it was, it's the first time I've ever coached a baseball team where my son wasn't involved, so it was a little bit of a different feeling, but it was amazing. So, congratulations, guys. City champions, Joliet.
(applause)
Standing off.
(laughing)
Good thing we're elevated. Great job, guys. Great job, boys. Next on the agenda, under Agenda Items and Reports, is a presentation of the Check to Muscular Dystrophy Association by the Joliet Fire Department.
That's a tough one to follow up, follow up the champions. We just want to show up a little bit, take a little bit of time, couple of minutes. It's been a couple of years since we've been here with the Golden Boot. I stand up here with Brian Hertzman from the Fire Department and Kate Shay from MDA. We just want to give a little check presentation to MDA. It's something, well, we weren't here, I think it's been two years since we've been up here. Like Kate and I were talking, there's some new faces, and she hasn't been up here since we remodeled, but it's always a nice way to do it and give back to the people of Joliet who actually help us to help them. So, if nothing else, I'll give it to Kate Shay. She'll tell you a little bit about the MDA if we can.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Again, my name is Kate Shay. I'm with the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and it is very much an honor and a privilege to be here tonight. It is tough to follow that act, for sure, but I am also a Joliet native myself and grew up here and started my career with MDA here in Joliet, and it's amazing to see 13 years later how far we've come and the support that we've continued to have from the City of Joliet as well as the Joliet Fire Department. As Eric said, it may have been a few years since we've been here to present the Golden Boot Award, but that is not because they haven't earned it. They've been huge supporters. We did some research, and from as far back as we could find, from 2001, the members of the Joliet Fire Department and the Joliet community has raised over $140,000 for MDA just through the Fill the Boot program. So that's really amazing for us, and that really, that does include the amount that we're gonna recognize specifically for 2013. The Joliet Fire Department is donating $8,000 to their contributions to MDA this year, which is a huge, huge amazing accomplishment for them. Fill the Boot isn't the only thing that the members of the Joliet Fire Department do to support the Joliet community, and many of you here know that, and it's not the only activity that members of the Joliet Fire Department do that the community supports for us. So, as Eric said, it's a little bit twofold while we're here tonight. It's certainly to highlight and recognize the work they do. I know it's not them putting the money in the boot, though, too. It's members of the community who are the ones supporting it when they're out on the streets and putting money in that boot for them time and time again, encouraging them to go out year after year. So just to give you a little history, this'll be the 60th anniversary that the firefighters have been working with MDA across the country with the Fill the Boot program. So it's not just here in Joliet, this happens, this happens nationwide. This year, we expect the collective will raise about $26 million for the work that MDA does. And many of you may be familiar with the Muscular Dystrophy Association. We know they've been around a long time, partnered with firefighters for over 60 years, and you may wonder, you know, how far have we come? Are we making progress? You've probably watched the telethon for years and seen Jerry Lewis up there and talked a lot about some of the local kids who are impacted, but that's why we wanted to make sure you knew as well, is that the work that we do locally. We have about 35 people who are registered with MDA who live within the Joliet community. We have about 3,000 who are registered with us who reside in northern Illinois, and we have local clinics that we provide for those family members. They can get regular multidisciplined care through Schreiner's Children's Hospital, through Children's Hospital up in Chicago, UIC, as well as Northwestern. We have a summer camp, which is one of the coolest things that we do for MDA, and our Joliet firefighters help be a part of that, too, that we do up north, where it's a week where our kids get to go and have an awesome experience, having, doing anything like any other child may do. It's just sometimes our kids have weaker muscles, so they may have to be in a wheelchair or need a little bit more help than someone else may. We have local support groups that we do, as well as provide things like flu shots. One of our kids may get a cold that could turn into pneumonia, which would become deathly very, very quickly for them. So one of the nicest things that we do here is we do help folks locally. So I know it's very important to the people who support MDA and support the Fire Department, and it's important to the Fire Department, we know that, too. They've had the opportunity to get to know some of the local families that MDA supports here in the area as well. One of the most important things that we do at MDA, though, is provide research and hope for cure. As I mentioned, I started with MDA 13 years ago, right here in Joliet, and at the time, the life expectancy for a young boy with Duchenne muscular dystrophy, which is one of the types we cover, may have only been about 16 or 17. I'm really proud and say today that life expectancy could be for a young man, someone who will live well in their 30s and 40s. There are treatments, there are therapies, things like the multidisciplined care that MDA provides at our clinics help make a long-term care plan realistic. We have kids planning to go to college now and plan for a career. That wasn't happening 13 years ago when I started. So, well, our work is definitely not done. That's why it's so important for us to be here tonight to say thank you to the members of the Joliet Fire Department and Eric here for helping coordinate our boot drive every year, but also the members of the community and the mayor and city council members here as you continue to support our efforts year after year and allow the Fire Department to be a part of this and support those efforts. So, we will proudly update the Golden Boot this year for the Joliet Fire Department to recognize the additional $8,000 contribution made this year, and it will remain here in the mayor's office in City of Joliet for another year. So we hope to be back next year recognizing them once again, but we, again, we just wanted to thank you so much for your time and your energy and your support for all our efforts at MDA.
If I could just, just one more minute. We fill the boot, we always spend, two years ago, we spent two full weekends doing it. That way, we made sure everybody got a shot to do it. When we fill the boot, we do it from everybody from the top. The chief is out there helping us, all the way down to the secretaries at the Fire Department. We don't, you know, everybody helps, and we like it that way. It's not, it's not about he or they, it's about everybody, and it's helping out. We get to see the people that we get to help. That's the best thing, and when you hear, you know, a wheelchair costs $30,000, and you think, wow, you know, who could, who could afford that? But we get to see it. This year, not only did we fill the boot, but we were welcomed by a new business, Jersey Mikes. They came to town, they said, hey, we would love to help you guys if you could help us. It happened up in, out west, they opened up a shop, and they gave us 5,000 coupons, and they said, could you hand these out to your friends? Which was a good deal. Hey, you come in, whatever they donate to the box, you know, you guys get. We split it with MDA in Pink Heels. 2,500 bucks, so $1,200 each way. Pretty good partnership. Most importantly, Jersey Mikes, they, it's a good way to start, and they always say, hey, you know, it's a good way to welcome to Joliet, and they said, hey, we're here for the next one, you know, and that's the way they do it. That's, that's their philosophy, give back to the community. It was a nice partnership, so I didn't want to let that go. But more importantly, I do want to talk about the citizens. We couldn't, we got the easy part, you stick a boot in the window, and hey, and if you can see, when you're out there and you see people and, you know, there's, hey, the guy says, I'm going to the bank, I'll be back, and you think, he'll never be back. Sure enough, there he is. You have people who say, I don't have a dollar on me, but you know, here's this ashtray full of stuff. It's, it means a lot. And then, just in closing, it was sort of interesting how we started talking earlier. She got to, she was in Chicago today, meeting with some people from Boston where it actually started, and she got to meet one of the guys who started the actual Fill the Boot, because his neighbor had problems, and they, they used to go door-to-door knocking on it. Well, we found an article in Joliet from 1955. It was Herald News, November 27th, 1955, when they used to go door-to-door knocking with the boot. You know, times have changed, and it's pretty interesting. It's been around for a while, and let's hope it stays this way. But thank you for the time, we sure do appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you.
Next, under Agenda Items and Reports, Councilman 533-13, position vacancies. It's recommended the City Manager be authorized to fill up to three part-time office assistant positions in the Customer Service Division and one public utilities field operations water utility service worker with subsequent vacancies. And Councilman 534-13, renewal of group health, dental, vision, and life insurance programs. It is recommended the City Manager be authorized to renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois PPO Health Insurance Plan for all eligible employees and retirees, and renew the Dearborn National Life Insurance Program for 2014.
So move. Second.
Questions?
Seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under ordinances and resolutions, under ordinances, Councilman 536-13, an ordinance approving the vacation of a 10-foot by 127-foot public utility and drainage easement on the west side of Lot 201 and on the east side of Lot 202 located in Ashford Place Unit 1. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So move.
Second.
Questions?
Krista.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Councilman 537-13, an ordinance approving a variation of use to allow a B3 use in a B1 zoning district located at 1107 West Jefferson Street, and an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow an antique sales business located at 1107 West Jefferson Street. It is recommended said ordinances be adopted.
So move.
Second.
Questions?
Krista.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Councilman 542-13, an ordinance approving the 2014 annual budget beginning January 1st, 2014, and ending December 31st, 2014. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So move. Second.
Any questions?
Just a quick one, Mr. Mayor. Jim, once we approve this, and then it takes effect at the first of the year, we keep going back to your strategic plans?
Yes.
So you will come back with us and tell us how the strategic plan affects this budget?
Yeah, the point, we're adopting the budget with minimal increases in our capital expenditures, just those that we felt comfortable and confident need to be done no matter what within our budget constraints. Any position that you're authorizing in the budget, we're not going to fill unless we come to you, like we did this evening with a couple of positions, but, but the point is, is to take that strategic plan and tie it into our current budget. So revisit the budget and say, are we focusing our financial efforts in the areas that you all have decided are the highest priorities for the community to move us into the future? So any, we won't fill any position, and again, I said, unless we come back to you, but by then, we should have revisited the budget and have in place any reorganizational plans internally within departments, or, again, reviewing the positions that you've authorized and confirming that you want to move forward with filling those positions.
Now, if your strategic plan, I doubt this would happen, but, you know, and not that it would happen, but if it came back and we looked at the fact that the budget was short of what we should have been doing, then we'll address it next year's budget and just have to live with this budget. What if your strategic, strategic plan, sorry, were to come back and actually, based on what you're proposing in January, February, March, when we do it?
Yes.
We have a half a million dollars, a million dollars that is not being allotted, you know, we're not gonna spend it there because we don't need it. We're gonna spend it here, and we're not gonna spend it there, and then when it's all said and done, you say, oh, look, we have $700,000. We would put that into reserve?
Again, right now, in the budget, we're putting 2.6 million towards our fund balance. Fund balance already exceeds the 16% or two months that we have allocated, and with that full contribution of 2.6 million, we'll be almost at 20%. So the question is, do you want to leave that towards reserves for another year, or do you want to utilize it for additional capital expenditure or other expenditures towards meeting the goals set forth in your strategic plan?
And that, our strategic.
Right.
And that's something that we'll discuss with you once you bring that strategic plan forward.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
I have one question. When we discussed the budget originally, you talked about hiring one firefighter. Is that out? No, we'll, we'll still come to you with that proposal at a meeting in January as a position vacancy that we're proposing to fill, and we can discuss it at that time. Okay, very good. Anybody else, questions?
Yes, Mayor. I'm putting you on the spot a little bit. Rachel, maybe you can help. I'm asking this question because it's come up the last couple of days, and I guess it's a follow-up on Councilman Hug. I think it's, maybe it's not well-known, but for years, our city council underfunded the pension funds. We currently are overpaying what we normally would have to pay in pensions to try to catch up to where we should be. And Rachel, maybe you can help out. How much do you think we're overpaying next year going forward to try to get the pensions where they were supposed to be? Is there a way to estimate that?
I don't, I'm not sure that overpaying is the appropriate term for it. We are funding at the actuarially required rate, and this year, in order to adjust, because we want to move down our adjustment for rate of return on the investments, we are recommending an additional contribution at the beginning of the year, but we are currently funding it at the recommend, or at the required actuarial rate. I think you're asking, because at one point, the assumptions were different, the assumption that the actuaries were basing their required contribution on were different than what they are now. I think the rate was 7.75% at one point, and it's now down at 7%. So the required contribution was based on that assumption versus the 7% that it's based on now. So, you know, I'm not sure what you mean by not funding it at the required rate, because we are funding it at what the actuarial required amount is. We just have changed our assumptions to be more in line with what we are seeing the performance of the funds to be.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, it's a confusing topic. I've had pension people who can't really explain it. Do we face a liability right now, or is the pension, are the pensions fully funded?
They're not fully funded. Can you speak to the funding levels?
Hey, Councilman, I believe, I don't have them in front of me, but I want to say the police and fire pension funds are probably in the low 50s, so it's probably about 52%, 54%. I don't have them in front of me, but I think, to piggyback on what Rachel was saying, there is a portion of the payment that certainly has to deal with the 48% or 46% that's not funded. I think that may be what you're asking. I'm not, I'm not positive.
Yeah, it is.
So, I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but there is certainly a good portion of the payment that does deal with that. That's created from a lot of different factors. Like Rachel said, when you change the assumptions, that funding percentage automatically goes down. I know that back in the late 2000, or 2008, we had a large decrease in the, in the stock market that really affected the pensions as well. There's a lot of different factors when you...
capital expenditure or other expenditures towards meeting the goals set forth in your strategic plan?
And that our strategic plan.
Right.
And that's something that we'll discuss with you once you bring that strategic plan forward.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
I have one question. When we discussed the budget originally, you talked about hiring one firefighter. Is that out?
No, we'll still come to you with that proposal at a meeting in January as a position vacancy that we're proposing to fill, and we can discuss it at that time.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Questions?
Yes, Mayor. Joe, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit. Rachel, maybe you can help. I'm asking this question because it's come up last couple of days, and I guess it's a follow-up on Councilman Hug. I think it's, maybe it's not well-known, but for years, our city council underfunded the pension funds. We currently are overpaying what we normally would have to pay in pensions to try to catch up to where we should be. Rachel, maybe you can help out. How much do you think we're overpaying next year going forward to try to get the pensions where they were supposed to be? Is there a way to estimate that?
I don't, I'm not sure that overpaying is the appropriate term for it. We are funding at the actuarially required rate, and this year, in order to adjust, because we want to move down our adjustment for rate of return on the investments, we are recommending an additional contribution at the beginning of the year. But we are currently funding it at the recommend, or at the required actuarial rate. I think you're asking, because at one point, the assumptions were different. The assumption that the actuaries were basing their required contribution on were different than what they are now. I think the rate was 7.75% at one point, and it's now down at 7%. So the required contribution was based on that assumption versus the 7% that it's based on now. So, you know, I'm not sure what you mean by not funding it at the required rate, because we are funding it at what the actuarial required amount is. We just have changed our assumptions to be more in line with what we are seeing the performance of the funds to be.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, it's a confusing topic. I've had pension people who can't really explain it. Do we face a liability right now, or are the pensions fully funded?
They're not fully funded. Ken can speak to the funding levels.
Hey, Councilman, I believe, I don't have them in front of me, but I want to say the police and fire pension funds are probably in the low 50s. So it's probably about 52%, 54%. I don't have them in front of me. But I think, to piggyback on what Rachel was saying, there is a portion of the payment that certainly has to deal with the 48% or 46% that's not funded. I think that may be what you're asking. I'm not positive.
Yeah, it is, yes.
So, I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but there is certainly a good portion of the payment that does deal with that. That's created from a lot of different factors. Like Rachel said, when you change the assumptions, that funding percentage automatically goes down. I know that back in the late 2000, or 2008, we had a large decrease in the, in the stock market that really affected the pensions as well. There's a lot of different factors when you factor in investment percentages over the years. If we don't meet that assumption, then obviously, it increases the unfunded percentage, depending on how raises were given over the years. If they were over or under what the assumptions are, those can negatively impact if they're over, and positively impact if they're under those percentages as well. So there's a lot of different factors involved, and you're certainly right. It is very confusing. I can't say that. I don't think we're unique in this. When you look around the state, most of the other communities are facing something similar. Some are in much worse shape than us, some are in a little bit better shape. But I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Rachel, you said that we are funding the pensions according to the actuarial requires us. Didn't we do that in the past, too?
Yes, I mean, we've always funded at the rate that the actuary requires us to fund it at. It is based, then, on the assumptions. So how good our assumptions were based on what the performance of the funds were at the time, that's what the actuarial required amount is determined by. And so if our assumptions were, like Ken said, if, you know, our assumptions were off, the amount that was contributed would have been off, so.
Were they our assumptions, or the Department of Insurance in Springfield that give us the seven and a quarter, seven and three-quarter percent as far as the return?
If I could jump in, Mayor, the, I believe I went back several years ago, about 15 years, and I think it's longer than that, but we've always used Gabriel Roder as an independent, basically. They figure out the assumptions. Because, for instance, if you had looked at it this year, and we use the Department of Insurance amounts, the contributions would be a lot less than what the city's doing. And the reason, for the difference, the primary reason, to not get too technical, is that what the state does is they basically take a statewide average and apply it to every municipality. When we hire our own actuaries, along with the cooperation of the boards, we're actually getting them to look at our specific demographic information, which is often different than the state.
So our contribution to the pension funds were based on our own actuarial?
Yes.
We asked them to tell us how much we had to put into the pension funds, and evidently they used the wrong percentage of return, and that's part of the reason why the pension funds are underfunded?
Well, I don't know if I'd say they used the wrong rate of return, but I would say that their estimates were certainly off at the time, and that was the purpose. I know when I got involved about five, six years ago, six years ago, the chief actually is on the, on the fire pension board. But we started looking at it and saying, these assumptions are a little too aggressive. So we started bringing them down, and that contributed to some of the underfunding, essentially.
Isn't part of the fact, not only the returns, the fact that people are living longer, the raises that they got, et cetera, et cetera, partially the problem along with the, what we donated according to our actuarial?
There's a lot of assumptions that go into her. I had mentioned previously that raises certainly are one of them, that you just mentioned. Obviously, the biggest thing as the fund gets older are the stock returns, because the amount that's in the fund becomes a much bigger portion of what affects things. But certainly, there are things like how long people are living. So mortality tables, those have been updated, I think, maybe twice in the last several years. We've also looked at things like disability tables, because there's been changes in legislation that have affected how people can apply for a disability. I think more on the fire side than the police side, but those certainly, if it's, if it's a little bit easier to get a disability, or actually, they're, you know, showing that they're recognizing different things, that can certainly add to the unfunding as well. But all those things together come in, and that's why it adds to the complexity that I know we discussed earlier.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Ken, when did we realize that we were using numbers that weren't adequate to today's standards? When did we finally wake up to realize that we were underfunding them, and we need to look at the new numbers that we're looking, am I correct, we're using the state now, as the mayor mentioned? Are we using those numbers?
No, we're actually not using the state. The state has, just like our independent actuarial, our actuary, excuse me, there's a whole series of assumptions, again, from disability to how long mortality, interest rate assumptions, the amount that raises, all of those things. And so what we did, I think it was about five, six years ago, about six years ago, when it became my responsibility, I sat down with the board, and we said, you know what, let's, let's actually have a study done, an analysis done, and see if the assumptions that we are doing are proper. So we asked our actuary to perform that special evaluation and look at it. And as a result of that, they did adjustments to the mortality tables, for instance. They did adjustments to the rate of return and a few of the other things. And, you know, when we've taken the time to speak with them, they want to be careful, too, not to make everything overly conservative. So, you know, you don't want to be overly conservative on every single assumption, and so they kind of look at it as a basket of items. But like I said, I know that the investment one was certainly one that we looked at.
So, just to make it clear, we get from our stuff, we get from the Department of Insurance, they recommend X amount of dollars to fund. Then we hire our own actuary, and he does a study, and then he recommends, and we've been taking the actuary's amount, which is bigger than the Department of Insurance amount.
I can speak to the last, I'll say, six, five, six years anyway. Our number has been larger.
Right.
I can't say that that's always been the situation. I don't know that for a fact. But I do know that our, the way that we do it by hiring our actuary should be much more sound, because we're using information on our specific plans.
Joliet-specific numbers, that's what we, that's what we've tried to do in the last six years, as Ken and Rachel were saying. We made this Joliet-specific. It's not just a generic statewide assumptions that we're using. We're using Joliet-specific assumptions based on historical trends. So over the last six years, I think I can speak for the fire department, fire department board. We've had a good working relationship with the finance department and with the city manager, and we have experienced increased contributions into the fund. They've worked with us very well on changing these assumptions and making them more realistic. And I think that's what you're seeing with this extra added dollars that will go in in the beginning of the year, and hopefully, that compounding that will go on, because we all have our fingers crossed, hoping the market's going to continue to return well, will result in, you know, added gains next year. And you have to remember, too, we're not, we're, our hands are tied, too. We're not able to put 100% of our monies into the stock market. We, you know, we have statewide rules that we have to follow with that as far as equities and fixed instruments, bonds, and T-bills and that type of thing.
Have they relaxed at all the statewide requirements of what we can and cannot invest the pension funds in? Have they relaxed at all?
Actually, they have, Mayor. I want to say, going back maybe about seven, eight years ago, it used to be about 35% equities that you could invest in. It's recently gone up, I think, as of last year to 55%. I think it went from 45%, 50%, 55% over the last several years. And so, as the chief said, that does enable the fund, which is really a long-term investment, to invest in something like an equity that's a little bit riskier, but over the time, you're going to get greater return. And so that should help the fund in the long term. It is, as the, as the chief said, though, they still do restrict it. I mean, if you look at something like IMRF, which is our other pension that we don't manage here locally, their, their investment options are a lot more diverse than these.
Does, do them same rules apply to the police pension fund and the fire, or?
They're, they're real close.
Real close?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor. With all that new information, Ken, am I understanding this right, then? We were 100% funded prior to the crash in 2008?
No, we were not.
Okay, what were we funded back in 2007?
You know what, I don't know. I'd have to look up for you. My guess-
Historically, in the finance committee, we've looked at it, we've always been hovering between 15% and 55%. And I think that's what Councilman Oderkirk was getting at, is we're on a 30-year, I call it the 30-year plan now, to respond to the requirements from the state, to fully, to fund, to, is it, if I remember correctly, is it 80% or is it 100%?
Well, actually, actually, the state requires, I think it's by 2041, 90% funding, but the city has a little bit more aggressive, where we're going to 100%, I think by 2043. My numbers might be off a little bit, but I know the 90 and the 100 are correct.
And I think that's the portion, Councilman, if I'm wrong, you know, how much of our mortgage payment, if you will, are we paying to make it there in 2043? Above what we're paying just for the, for the costs, the new costs of each year?
Yeah, that's a number I don't have in front of me.
All right, so we were underfunded prior to the 2008 crash?
We were. I want, it may have been in the 80s, something like that. I don't think too many places were near 100, but I'd have to check, Councilman.
I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, history doesn't repeat itself. What was the funding, the requirement for funding back then? Do you recall? I mean, the new one is 90% by 2043? Was it, was it 50%, 70%?
You know, I'd have to check, Councilman. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I guess if I could wrap it up here. The reason why I ask the question, I spoke to someone on the pension board with these questions, and it was explained to me that essentially, if it was a credit card, we're only making the minimum payment now, that we're not hitting the balance of what we owe. But from what you're saying, that probably isn't true. We are cutting into what we owe?
No, that's, that's, I think the chief would-
No, that's not true. We, what are the payments going to be for the fire department? About $11 million?
Yeah, I think they're like-
I think the pension payment is about $11 million for the fire department. I think our payroll for pensioners and stuff would be, is it six, Rachel? Something like that? So we're probably putting about $5 million towards paying down the debt?
Yeah, actually, maybe a better way to, if I had the pension report in front of me, and I know it's actually online, but if you follow it, what they do is, it's like a mortgage payment, in that they basically do a 30-year projection, and with the assumptions that if you make all the payments as-is, you will have it paid off in 30 years. The thing that's different about your more, than like our mortgage, right? So I have a mortgage at home, and it's 30 years, and it's fixed. I know exactly what's going to happen. The problem is with this, the balance changes all the time. And so, but the actuaries figure it out as if we are paying principal and interest.
Well, thank you. And I'm glad, it looks like we're heading in the right direction. So that was really where the questions were coming from. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
It's been motioned and seconded that the 2014 annual budget be approved. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Yes, I'd just like to mention that, bring attention to the systematic approach that Mr. Hock has employed in developing this budget. I can safely say during my time in government, especially watching the city of Joliet, this is the first time that we have a budget that's paired directly to a plan of action of how we are going to move forward in municipal spending. So kudos to you, and I vote aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, Council Number 544-13, a resolution appropriating additional funds for the Route 59 roadway reconstruction and traffic signal installation project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second. Questions?
Been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Under approval of regular current bills, Council Number 546-13, regular payroll from November 1st through the 14th, 2013, $3,098,266.81. It is recommended said regular payroll be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Krista.
Been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug. Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under bids and contracts, award of contracts, Council Number 548-13, award of contract for the manganese sulfate purchase 2014. Council Number 549-13, award of contract for the blended phosphate solution purchase 2014. Council Number 550-13, award of contract for the sodium hypochlorite solution purchase 2014. Council Number 551-13, award of contract for the sodium permanganate purchase 2014. Council Number 552-13, award of contract for the bio-solid disposal program 2014. Council Number 553-13, purchase a combination jetter vacuum sewer cleaner for the utilities department. Council Number 554-13, purchase a vehicle for the Tri-County Auto Theft Task Force. Council Number 555-13, award the contract for the demolition of two commercial properties, 25 South Joliet Street and 353 East Jackson Street. Council Number 556-13, award a contract for the asbestos abatement at 25 South Joliet Street. It is recommended Council Numbers 548-13 through 556-13 be approved.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Mike, did you get a chance to review what these quotes are compared to last year, what we're buying here?
For-
For- Different sodium-
Yeah, they were, we had a better bid this year, I believe, than we did last year. We went back to a supplier that we had lost from last year because they weren't the low bidder. So I think the current bidder is out of La Salle Peru. Is that right, Jim?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think they got three of the four contracts because they can deliver at a cheaper rate. Sometimes their base, their base price wasn't, wasn't as low, but when you're figuring the discount for the transportation, they were a little better.
Thank you, thank you. Aye.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye, again.
Motion carried. Under amendments, change orders, and payments, Council Number 558-13, approve change order number two and final for the Route 59 roadway reconstruction and traffic signal installation project. Council Number 559-13, approve change order number three and payment number seven and final for the East Side wastewater treatment plan aeration piping modifications construction project. It is recommended Council Numbers 558 through 559-13 be approved.
So moved.
Second. Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Jim Trizna, you're a hero in District 1 for what you pulled off out there on 59, and I appreciate the explanation yesterday about how you were able to get it done and not reintroduce the inconvenience that up and down 59 people have had for the last four or five years. So thank you. Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under Mayor, Mayor Gerani appointments?
I have, don't have any.
Next is new business, not for final action or recommendation.
Mayor? I wanted to suggest, I would like something to be explored probably by the finance committee. Currently, I'll use round numbers. Currently, on our healthcare administration, we pay about a million dollars a year in processing our administrative fees to Blue Cross Blue Shield. That comes out to about an average of $24, $26 per month per member of the group. Industry standard is lower, closer to $10 a month in a group for the processing. So I think as a city, the numbers that I've crunched preliminarily with the help of some professionals that know even more than myself, even as an agent, I think we need to look at going in-house with it, because it looks like you can staff an in-house department, say with roughly four, um, uh, one director and, and, uh, four employees, for about, uh, five hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand a year to do that process. We would then be doing it in-house, and we'd be saving four hundred, uh, uh, five hundred and fifty, five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if that's doable on the preliminary numbers, I think, I, I would like to have this assigned to the finance committee, Councilman Turk, so that we start looking into that to see if these real savings are, are attainable. Uh, half a million is nothing to sneeze at.
Okay.
Anybody else?
No.
Next is Mayor and Council comments?
Councilman Girl?
I have no comments, Your Honor.
Councilman Hug?
Nothing tonight.
No comment.
I have nothing.
Well, I did, just, uh, thank you, Mayor, for, um, emceeing the parade. It was, it was a real nice event. I know most of us on the council were there. And, um, stay warm this weekend. I guess the temperature's really gonna drop, so, thank you.
I can hardly talk, no comment.
Um, Your Honor, um, Sunday, November twenty-fourth, yourself, Councilman Morris, and myself attended the, um, the anniversary, uh, dedication of the prayer tower, what is it called, the prayer, uh, Prayer Tower Ministries Church of God in Christ. It's celebrated sixty-one years in existence. And, uh, Reverend Doris's church, uh, celebrated their first year anniversary. And it was, uh, it was a great event, and I applaud Reverend, uh, Pastor Doris for his, uh, commitment he's made to the community. Um, he's got a beautiful facility and, um, showed us plans of, uh, an eighteen-thousand-foot expansion that he's, he's going to do in the next year, which adds more meeting rooms and more, uh, a, a, a big gymnasium that, uh, will service the community. So it was a real nice affair, and, uh, I applaud Reverend Doris and thank him for his commitment and the quality of the, uh, the stuff he's doing there. And also, I'd also like to thank all those who were responsible for, uh, organizing the parade. It takes hundreds of people to do that. We have the easy part, just showing up and getting on the float and, and doing our thing, but it takes a lot of people to coordinate it. And, uh, the crowds were great, and, and it was, it was a great, a great, uh, great evening.
Thank you. And Pastor Doris has a beautiful facility out there. It is nice.